Call this city meeting to order the City Commission of Rio Grande City, Texas, Wednesday, July 12, approximately 6:01 PM here in Commission Chambers, City Hall 5332 East US Highway 83, Rio Grande City, Texas. This time we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Garza followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Jones.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for giving us the opportunity to get together as a city councilman and conduct city business. We ask that you guide us, that you assist us in making the right decisions. We ask you, Lord, that you bless those present here with us today and those that are not. We ask you, Lord, that you bless our police officers, that you bless our soldiers here and abroad. And we thank you, Lord, for all the wonderful blessings you've bestowed in us and for this great city. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, individing, just as for all. Honor the Texas flag and lay your peace to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
This time we'll have item 1B, which is rope call and finding a forum. Ms. Guerrero?
Thank you, Mayor Villarreal.
Present.
Mayor Jose Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Salinas is absent. Commissioner Valdez is absent. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
You have a forum, sir.
Thank you. This time I wanted to take a few minutes, a moment of silence for, to Ruben Klein, who was an employee of Rio Grande City for over 40 years and contributed to the development or contribution of our city. Again, if we can have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Next business in order is item 1C, public forum. This time we have CA or A, Sandra Garza of Scan and Teresa Garza representing Scan, outpatient counseling, to comment on proposed liquor license for business to be located at 309 Garza Street.
Good evening.
Hi.
Mayor, city council members. My name is Sandra Garza and this is Tessa Garza. And we are here representing Scan. We are here because we oppose the variance for the liquor license on the address 309 Garza Street. And I have passed some information on some of the different points of why we oppose this liquor license for that address. The first one is data. We have some data. And 43, this data was collected in here and in Texas and in our local community through our surveys. And the reason is 43% of youth have used alcohol. 40% of youth felt there is a low risk of daily use of alcohol. And another one that is not stated there is that alcohol is the number one abuse drug and the number one choice of drugs for youth in our community and state and national levels. And 88% believe that their parents would consider regular consumption of alcohol being wrong. The reason I put that in there is because if parents have an influence on our kids, we are seeking your help in helping this impact our youth in making the right decision. The other one is advertising. The typical American sees 100,000 beer commercials by the time they turn 18. By allowing this liquor license to permit to sell alcohol or liquor at that area, it's going to increase the advertising of these youth, especially in the neighborhood area that is being proposed. And as you all know, advertising works. So you might say, well, this is not going to affect anybody. It will affect the people, it will affect the youth, and so that is another reason. The other reason is accessibility. In the surveys that I have mentioned prior, it says that one in five high school students reporting obtaining, very easy to obtain alcohol. So that is another reason why we should not allow another establishment here in a neighborhood in a public area where youth gather around. So accessibility. And the other one is contradicting. A liquor store there is the opposite of the existing positive environment that we want to give our youth. So there's a public library there. There is University of Texas Health Science Building right across Catty Corner to that proposed location. There's also a, we ourselves scan, we have an outpatient treatment there. And we consider that being as close to a hospital because, you know, we are offering services, treatment services, including alcohol and other drugs. So having that liquor store there will not be good for these people that are going getting treatment services there. So it is contradicting to what we are fostering in this neighborhood. You know, where we have all these different, we also have, there's also a zumba place there. And so all these are positive things. So we don't want to add a negative thing there in that area. Another one is that on June 13, there was a meeting here from the Rio Grande City Planning and Zoning Department, and they did not recommend that this liquor license, the variance, be given to this establishment or this area. So the zoning and planning department agree that they did not recommend giving a liquor license to this place. And the last one is the collective duty. Certain general report call to action is the reduce of the availability. So this would be an action to reduce availability of alcohol in our community. So it is our duty as parents, committee, and members to influence and to improve, not to worsen our community. So we strongly oppose that you allow this liquor license to be given in this particular area. So I don't know if Tessa, she is a counselor in this close nearby.
Go ahead.
My name is Tessa Garza and I'm a counselor at this facility. And I would urge you to vote against this because we are trying to help families and teenagers that suffer from addiction. And this location is way too close to where we're trying to help these individuals. So this would be totally detrimental to their progress, their sobriety. So I would urge you to consider that for the teenagers and the families and adults that we're trying to help out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Ms. Melissa Andrade to comment on proposed liquor license for business to be located at 309 Garza Street.
Good evening, Mayor and city commissioners. Thank you for your time. I will be brief. My name is Melissa Andrade and I'm here in front of you tonight asking for your consideration and your approval for me to, for me to have a packaged liquor store. This is a TABC off-premise permit, meaning the alcohol will not be consumed on the location. I will abide by all TABC requirements. Therefore, the business will only open Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM through 9:00 PM. It will follow all procedures necessary to be in accordance with the city laws as well. I believe you gentlemen know me outside of this room to be a law-abiding individual. I am simply asking to be given the opportunity to open a business where I will employ three to five employees based on the season and also bring in a projected sales revenue of half a million dollars. Therefore, that translates to tax money for the city. I understand that operating permits are issued by the city. They're reviewed every year for inspection. They're not guaranteed, but I plan to follow all the regulations to be in compliance. With your approval, the historic building where the location will be will be brought up to code, fully restored and beautified. I plan on investing around $25,000 to $30,000 on improvements. With that being said, in regards to my opposition, with all due respect, I understand where they're coming from and the proximity of a liquor store to their office. But let me explain my view. Their office is no less than two blocks away from an already existing establishment that sells alcohol to its patrons for on-premise consumption. My establishment will not. City council needs to be made aware of the fact that temptation for drinking is not in a liquor store. If an individual enrolled in their program chooses, regardless of a store's location, they will fall off the wagon, so to speak. There is a higher possibility that someone would relapse in a social gathering where alcohol is free and in abundance and others are drinking. Let me give you an example, a story. I know of an individual, he had a stroke about two years ago. He was a heavy drinker, perhaps he could be considered an alcoholic. However, after the stroke, he gave up drinking and remained sober since. He attended a class reunion, a social gathering, even though others in the group knew of his situation and encouraged him not to. He consumed a beer, saying out loud, "One will not hurt." Needless to say, at the end of the night, he had drank six beers. I understand each case is taken on an individual basis. However, my point, I am trying to make you understand, he could have easily in the last two years have purchased alcohol on his own. There are many convenience stores, many grocery stores that he goes in and out of, but he chose not to buy or consume. Therefore, a place that sells liquor or beer is not the enticing factor. It is within each person's personal choice, their self-restraint that makes them sober. I kindly ask for your consideration and approval of my endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next business in orders, 1D, departmental reports. Calling Ms. Guillen.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I've got a couple of different areas I will cover. Let's try to be as short as possible on a summary of activities for the EDC and some just general news for the economy in Rio Grande City. As you know, this summer, actually, yeah, this summer, the Mexican retailer of Famsa announced that it will be closing nearly half of its stores in the United States due to weakening sales and increased operating losses in the US market. Famsa announced that it will shut down all of its stores in California, Nevada, and Arizona later this year, leaving them with 22 stores in Texas and three in Illinois. Sadly, Rio Grande City store has closed. However, it provides a leasing opportunity in our historic downtown district and we're pursuing prospects for that. Payless Shoe Store unveiled a second round of store closings recently as its bankruptcy reorganization moved forward, bringing the total number of locations to be closed this year to as many as 800. Payless Shoe Store filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy in April and in the second phase is closing about 400 locations. And sadly, Rio Grande City will be seeing the closure of its store at the end of this month. But that too will provide an opportunity, leasing opportunity of which we are pursuing prospects for. And while at the national level, the talk around retail has been how shoppers are looking online and turning online for discounts, deeper discounts and better deals, many of the stronger names and brands out there continue to thrive. So don't want to worry anybody. And while some businesses may close, others are opening or getting ready to open. And some recent grand openings include, and one that will be announced a little later to you in more detail, is the apartment complex of Gran Cielo in northwest Rio Grande City. They're having a soft opening next week, but they anticipate a larger celebration for their 80-unit apartment complex in the spring. Downtown, last week, we had a celebration with the Medicare store. And they too are bringing their services to our community and are excited to be joining Rio Grande City. And just last month, we participated in the grand opening of El Pecado Restaurant in eastern Rio Grande City, in fact, right behind City Hall. But we can look forward to some new construction, commercial construction. Medina Electric has announced that they will be breaking ground on their facility and we hope to have details on a groundbreaking as early as August. And then also, if you're driving around the north-central part of the city, you'll see a sign for Border Town and Border Ace Hardware. They too are getting ready to make a sizable investment in our community and we look forward to that new construction. Over the summer, we partnered with Workforce Solutions to host a job fair of which the city participated in in announcing some job openings. And there were about 100 job seekers and 20 employers, including Rio Grande City's new idea public schools and Walmart, T-Mobile, and others providing over 200 job opportunities to our residents. We continue with our business education and we've partnered with the UTRGV Small Business Development Center and our Rio Grande City Public Library to host a Social Media Basics for Small Business. And this event is taking place at the Rio Grande City Public Library on July 27. Downtown, so Ms. Belinda Trevino and her Main Street Advisory Board President attended the Texas Main Street Summer Development Training in San Angelo, Texas. And there they discussed downtown promotion, building design, economic vitality, and ideas for how to revitalize downtowns across Texas. And I'm sure Belinda will have a little bit more information on that. The EDC also had the opportunity to participate in a federal and community resource conference in West Laco. We went along with many other valley cities to hear from our federal funding agencies, including EDA, USDA, EPA, and others. While they discussed that some of the agency's procedures are still in transition with the new administration, they assured us that monies will continue to be allocated and we're going to pursue some of those opportunities for our projects in the city. And as Ruta 544 takes off, we have our neighboring community of Camargo, who has come to us to find ways to work together on promoting our local port, port of entry. And so we have met on several occasions to discuss a regional campaign with our neighboring Ciudad Camargo to attract import companies into our community and encourage the use of our port of entry and consider our city as a distribution point for their goods. And we'll have more to report as those projects develop. As far as prospects, many of these are confidential and so we cannot release names yet, but we'll be excited to do so when we're ready. We do have a retail project that is projected to bring up to 500 new jobs to the city and that in itself is in final negotiations. We're also facilitating site selection for a healthcare industry prospect. This is going to bring about 10 to 12 million dollar investments to the city and up to 200 healthcare-related jobs. In addition, we are facilitating site selection for a competitive light manufacturing prospect. They will start small, but they anticipate that at the minimum, we'll start with 20 technical jobs and we'll grow from there. We're also facilitating a site selection project for the energy sector. And that too will encourage collaboration with our partners in Mexico and Ciudad Camargo. We're working with a developer on a brownfield project site for a future retail project. The area is a dilapidated building and an eyesore in our community and we're hoping this developer will be able to bring that area to beautification. We are also working with, excuse me, an established home developer to refine agreements for affordable housing options in our city. And lastly, we're working with our state agencies as well as private stakeholders on a commercial transportation project that will help to spur additional commercial traffic through our city. And if you don't already get our newsletter, to learn about all the things that we're working on, I encourage you to sign up on our website. You'll find valuable research tools along with information on our growing city. And that is what I have to report.
It's very promising, Ms. Guillen.
There is light at the end of the tunnel.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Any questions?
On the two sites, so you've visited with individuals already regarding Payless and Famsa?
We have some, we have some interested prospects and we're still working through some of that. We've got other projects that are competing with those locations, but nonetheless, they're available and promising locations for those prospects.
Thank you. Chief Paves?
Mayor Commissioners?
Hello, Chief.
We're going to City Department will be hosting some emergency management classes with DPS this coming week on Monday and Tuesday for all city employees that are wanting to take some emergency management classes and also working on the emergency management plan for this coming year. Since it's the 50th anniversary on the plan itself, so we're going to be having some courses Monday and Tuesday, probably both days, at STC.
Are we in preparation for a potential hurricane?
We're still monitoring. There are some tropical storms out there here and there. We're supposed to be getting some rain maybe today and tomorrow for the weekend. So we're monitoring the weather and see what goes. Hopefully, nothing will happen and...
But we're ready, sir. All right. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Milan?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Mr. Milan?
Just to collaborate on what Ms. Guillen said, Famsa and Payless are due to their existing situation and closing most of the stores. This is not Rio Grande City's fault, by the way. On the plus side, the idea academy is ready. It's a brand-new building, big investment in the city of Rio Grande City. Medina Electric, I'd like to say we issued a building permit a week and a half ago. There's a new retail store, Dollar General, be built within the next, started construction already. And a couple of retail, commercial, border town, country stores, stores, the horizon. Last month, there was a total investment, well, total improvement of 172,785 square feet of construction in the city of Rio with a valuation of $7,124,240. This is a dollar amount of investment, not building permit fees, with total number of permits of 134 permits. So therefore, there's still hope.
A great investment.
Yes, sir.
Keep them coming, sir.
Have both been approached, but a certain chain that I personally like. But I'm not going to say the name, but it's usually closed on Sundays. Yes, I'm not going to say the name, but yes, they called me, they want to, they're looking at Rio Grande City. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Perales?
Mayor Commissioners?
Perales?
Just a friendly reminder, on our youth track team, we had nine kids qualify for the state to compete the McAllen Taft Meet next week. And we look forward for that. I know our program ended and of course, the coaches have put an effort there helping the kids prepare for the track meet for an effort next week. And our programs have finished, our softball ended pretty good, our youth volleyball ended this past weekend as well. So we're, our programs going straight forward.
Let's see, we can recognize those coaches?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Once again, we can do that next month. I know, like I mentioned, at the Lomas community, we had those parents getting involved doing that camp. So we, I look forward for that, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, Sarah, you're operating the recording equipment. Do you have a moment or talk about Freedom Fest?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. As you all know, on June 24, we held the third annual Freedom Fest event with cook-off. Everything went according to plan. Thankfully, we had a good attendance and we're looking forward to hosting this event next year. But on to the next event, we celebrated USA and now we need to celebrate our Hispanic roots. So we will be having our third annual Viva Mexico event on 16 de septiembre. And we'll have musical performances by La Lumora, La Fortaleza. We'll also have Lucha Libre, we'll have different contests. The Boys and Girls Club will be fundraising through the bingo, the Mexican lottery. And so we're just looking forward to that. Main Street will host their Michelada contest, so they invite the businesses. And I do want to recognize Main Street because we did get 53 bike and skateboard donations for the Super Raffle and it was a big hit. I know we, I think we signed up over 400?
418.
418 kids signed up for the Super Raffle. So it was a big hit. We had everybody under the pavilion during that time and they're very excited to win their bike and their skateboard and...
And once again, thank you to all the sponsors.
All the sponsors and all the departments.
And thank you for making that happen. And again, can't stress enough, the, thank you to the sponsors and what they contributed. And again, I saw a lot of kids with smiley faces and big smiles regarding their skateboards and bikes and it was excellent to see. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have any questions?
No.
We want to judge some Michelada?
Make it bigger and better next year, always.
We have more pressure on you next year.
I know, always. I can take it. I'm juggling right now. But it'll be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Ms. Bolts, you have?
Good evening, Mayor.
Ms. Bolts?
We just concluded our summer reading program and we had, I want to give you the number seat.
4,200 and some, was it? Excellent.
Well, visiting our library was, yes, 4,587 people. But in our program, we had 1,440 participants. There were children, teens, and adults. And this year, we, like I had shared with you all earlier, we found that we've reached our maximum capacity inside the building. So for some of the bigger programs, like our summer reading program, we needed to look outside the library. And we were fortunate enough that the KC Hall was available and that the Knights of Columbus allowed us to use that. So we had over 100 people there for the party. And I did share a picture with you all so you could see. We did invite the police department, the crime stoppers to do the fingerprints for the kids and Sparky, the fire dog, showed up. We had the International Museum of Arts and Science from McAllen came and did a real nice program with the kids. They had these big foam logos, which worked out better to have it at the KC Hall because they had more space there to do that. The next thing we're starting is called Fred, Families Reading Every Day. And as long as families commit to reading 15 minutes a day for four weeks, they will also get a certificate and we'll have another party for them. But this is mainly for the, for parents that might not be able to come to the library for programs and a way to continue with our literacy programs.
Thank you, Ms. Bolts. Mr. Guerra, did you have an update?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor.
Mr. Guerra?
Real today.
Great year.
That's good, sir.
Great summer.
Just to let you know, we continue working on drainages throughout the city. Concerned, we are, hurricane season is here with us. And we're doing a lot of tree treatment along 83 towards the east side of town. Continuing sweeping our streets, Mayor, and Assistant Allied Sanitation Department with their mixed brush and all this stuff, also there, right?
Let's keep an eye on all the drainage, particularly this time of year.
Yes, we've been working closely with that. We've been working real closely with that so we can, you know, in case we have anything...
Are we caught up with them?
Pardon, sir?
With the drains, with the runoffs and all of that, we're caught up with?
Yes, sir.
Whether clean and cleaned up?
They've been maintained, Mayor. Sure, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra.
Job well done, maintaining, cleaning up the sidewalk seats of Rio Grande City, Mr. Guerra.
Thank you.
Ms. Samiris, I know Mr. Cantu's out on vacation. Did you want to mention anything?
No.
Okay.
And I know we don't wanna leave the museum out. Is there anything? No, you're good?
May I share something?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor. City Commissioners.
Mr. Orive.
I'd like to thank and recognize two of our Commissioner members that are present here today. Our Chair, Mr. David Porras.
Mr. Porras?
Mr. Porras, good afternoon.
And Member Historian, Mr. Arce Salinas was here.
I know, I said hello to him earlier. He disappeared.
Thank you for joining us. Uh, just very, very briefly, I'd like to share with you, I've had a chance to see the town crier in the historical pages, uh, this week. We are hosting a gene, uh, I can spell it, but I can't say it, genealogy. Uh, session this on the twenty-second. Mr. Santiago Jimmy Lopez will be here. He will be talking about the procedure that he uses to do the research on genealogy. We're very proud of our family roots here in Rio Grande City and in Starr County, so we're gonna open up an opportunity for citizens to come at, uh, no cost. The public is invited. And there will be small fifteen-minute sessions where they can just kind of whet their appetite and make up appointments with Mr. Lopez for a later time. This will be from ten to two on, uh, the twenty-second there at the Kelsey Bass in the Chamber.
Will there be any genetic testing as well?
No, no DNA this time. We don't wanna have any surprises at the museum come out. No skeletons, no skeletons. Uh, and, uh, our visit with, uh, General Ricardo Sanchez went really, really well. Uh, we, uh, have his uniform on display on, uh, one of our mannequins and, uh, several awards that he has earned, and pictures and memorabilia. We're very happy to have those. And he was, uh, we had a two-hour session, uh, visit with him. Mr. Joel Garcia happened to be in San Antonio that weekend, and so he joined me there. And, uh, we're hoping to, at a later date, have some kind of ceremony dedication to where we can invite him and the public for the exhibit. It's in the works and, uh, setting it up. And the plans for Beulah are working and marching forward. Uh, we had the county come in and meet with me yesterday. Uh, Mesencia Fuentes and Ramiro Saravia were there. We're coordinating, uh, the efforts with the county and the city for the night of the Tardeada on Preparedness, so that this, uh, county can make aware what they have available in case we have any kind of disasters. And that's what's happening right now. Any questions?
And thank you to Mr. Porras. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilman, good, uh, good evening. As you all know, you know who I am. It is a privilege and an honor to be standing here before you and, uh, to serve you and the community as the Chairman of the Kelsey Bass Museum. And we're very fortunate to have Mrs. Orive here with us. I'd just like to say a few words that it's been eleven months since we started the museum, and I think we've come a long ways, of course, with the support and help from the city itself. The museum itself is an integral part of the infrastructure of any city. As you can see, every single city down here in the River Grande Valley is coming up with a museum, which unfortunately, we've been forgotten and left out. But for our children's children, the generations to come, this is a, a part in our history where we can recall, they can come back and find out where we stand, what we've done, and where we headed. Okay? We're coming up with a, um, an event called the Philanthropist of River Grande City, a never, ever event that's never happened here before. So unfortunately, you know, or fortunately, that every event we're doing is history being made here in River Grande City. The philanthropist list, each single member of the council will be given a list of people from River Grande City that have contributed to the growth and development of River Grande City. It can be twenty, thirty, forty persons. We're, we're planning on having a philanthropist night. Each single member will come up with the names and their contribution. We'll vote, the only the council, the, um, chamber will vote on it, will display that persons that have contributed to the city of River Grande City. Whatever directions and steps they took, it is where we are right now. It's, it has affected us here today, as I speak. At the same token, uh, or at the same time, we're also looking into the pioneers of science. Yes, we got 'em here in River Grande City, and they need to be recognized. Yes, we do have 'em. We have a few. It's, that one's a little bit harder. So we're gonna give, uh, the, uh, commission a five, six-month period to come up with, uh, the names and their contribution to the, to the city. And then, list the, uh, athletics, person that really have made an outstanding performance in, in sports. These people have to be recognized. This is our history. So because of the museum in place, we're gonna make it happen. Let's recognize these outstanding citizens of River Grande City, okay? And, uh, as you all know, we're coming up with the twenty-fifth anniversary of the city incorporation of Rio Grande. So that's another good event for all of us to really join hands and get on board and, and celebrate. And, uh, at the same time, was, uh, you've seen some of the projects that we've been discussing or we already had, but we're, because of the time limitation, we're trying to come up with a workshop so we can hopefully, hopefully get a budget going and a, uh, an event calendar for this coming year. And, um, also, as you can recall, the, uh, commission was passed a couple of months ago, so it's been eleven months, and I think we have come a long ways without having any budget, any monies. We've been scratching here and there, but we've made it happen. And, uh, all I can say is that thank you very much, and I'm here to help you and the community in any way we can. All right? Any questions? Thank you very much.
All will, sir.
Thank you.
Once again, sir, thank you and to the, uh, board members that actually, you know, give up your time and effort. Again, can't say that enough about all the board members in different organizations that we have in commissions that contribute, uh, their time and effort and freely, you know, which is great to have. Again, thank you.
Chief Castillo?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioner.
Hello, Chief.
How you all doing?
Sir, it's a great summer, I'm telling you, dear.
Thank you. We're looking into, uh, changing phone service, uh, and, uh, gonna make a presentation to y'all. Uh, Mr. Perez and I met with, uh, Sprint. We're currently, uh, I believe with AT&amp;T, and this is just for the police department, not, uh, throughout, for the city. But, uh, Sprint is offering us, uh, a better deal in essence of, uh, what we're getting for the police department. I, I put, uh, put up a little brochure for y'all. And the service that we, we would get with, uh, Sprint, uh, they're, uh, offering us a, uh, a package that comes with the, uh, automatic, automatic injury detection unit. And that, uh, actually is, uh, is a lining that goes inside the vest, and, you know, it, uh, requires a cellphone for every officer in the, in the PD. The, uh, what this, uh, covering does goes in front and back. If an officer gets shot or stabbed, um, that alerts the, every single, single phone that, uh, is with the plan, also communications. It opens an automatic land communication from the officer to the, to the, to dispatch, and also gives a GPS coordinates of the officer, um, caliber of his weapon that he has, he's carrying, um, information on his blood type, uh, where he was shot, uh, if he's allergic to any medications or, uh, you know, anything. If he's diabetic, for the first response, they're to, uh, take action and go forward and, and help the officer. So if the officer cannot, uh, reach for his radio or his phone, that opens an automatic line, it'll stay open until somebody gets there. So this plan, right now, we have thirteen phones, and, uh, we have fourteen air cards to go with our copsing computers. Um, this plan actually would be thirty dollars less of what we're paying right now. And the equipment is over twenty-three thousand dollars, you know, for, for what they're doing. The, uh, Sprint got together with, uh, Select Engineering Services, and they're providing this to law enforcement and, you know, to see if we can save a little bit more lives with all the stuff that's been going on in the country. So, uh, the military has tested it. They're actually still testing it and using it, and I think it's a great, uh, tool for what we have in our area. You know, we don't wanna use it, and hopefully we won't, but if, uh, somebody does get shot or hurt, you know, it's a tool that maybe will help, uh, save a life. So this is what we're looking at, uh, for the future. And, you know, I think, uh, we would be the first ones in South Texas to actually use this. I think Kansas is using it right now, and there has been a demo of this, uh, it was actually in the Dade and Dado County, and they've already presented it to Laredo and, uh, other areas in South Texas.
So the plan would be less expensive, but it would have more...
We would get double the phones. We'd get those, uh, those panels, which are five hundred dollars each. Uh, they actually have five-year warranty, and, uh, the phones, we could exchange them every twenty months. Uh, it's a limited data, uh, limited, uh, minutes and everything else that goes along with it. And we can actually segregate what, uh, the officers are supposed to use with the phones. So, you know, that, I think it's a great tool for what we got, and it's a bang for the buck. So that's what we're looking at for the future. Any questions?
No, Chief. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
So more for less, really, is that the...
Yes, sir.
Alright, sir.
When are we looking to, when are we looking to...
If, uh...
...back in with this?
We could do it, uh, we just have to sign the agreement and we start working on it as of tomorrow, you know? And if there's any cutoff fees from the other company, they'll cover up to six hundred dollars per line. And then we get credit also for every phone that we turn back into them, so we'll probably end up with a credit at the end also. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else, Mr. Perez?
Anyone else?
If I may, Mr. Perez, and Mayor, I'd like to recognize some silent heroes that we have within the departments, uh, people that are probably not at the forefront of some of the events, but in all, uh, cases, they do provide, um, cost-saving services. And I wanna recognize Mr. Mario Salinas and Enrique Sepulveda at the parks. They saved a thousand dollars by putting their hands into working and fixing the, the motors. Uh, and I also want to recognize, um, Abiel and Imelda. They cut the delinquency in the sanitation department in less than a year by fifty percent. So I think they, these are some of the heroes that are hard at work. They're not at the forefront, but they deserve recognition.
Well, where is Mr. Science?
I'm right there.
Gotta recognize her.
Here you go.
Mr. Science.
Mayor, Commissioner.
So we cut it by fifty percent, delinquency, is that...
Yes.
Yep.
We did.
It was at around eighty-five percent, and, uh, they're at thirty-five now. So they're, they're at it. It's a team of two, and of course, they're workers.
Yeah.
Alright, sir. I guess you're gonna take care of all the, all the other delinquency as well.
We, I wanted to add, uh, that, uh, we were doing, uh, larviciding too for the mosquitoes for this past month. And, uh, so everything came out, you know, the way it should, so, other than that, uh, real king.
And thank you for that, sir. It makes a huge difference, cutting down on, on delinquency and obviously a contribution to, to our overall budget. So thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Gave up the great work.
Thank you.
One last thing, it's Operation Lone Star. Uh, Mayor, they're expecting you, like every year, to take the round, uh, the screening services, the medical services at the middle school. So it's the last week of July.
The last week of July?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next, uh, business and orders, item two, Consent Agenda. And all matters listed under Consent Agenda are, uh, considered to be routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, however, if discussion is desired, that item or items will be removed from the, uh, Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. This time we have A, B, and C, Federal Departmental Travel Request, Approval of Minutes from Previous Meetings, and Approval of Action Taken at the Meeting of Kelsey Bass Museum and Event Center, Commission Held on June twenty-first, twenty-seventeen. entertain a motion at this time?
Mayor, there's no corrections on the minutes. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. We're looking to approve the Consent Agenda. We have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, business and orders, item three, Public Hearing. Letter A, Public Hearing Regarding the Abandonment of the Alley Located Within Block Seven of the Corrected Doino North Grammar School Subdivision of Record at Volume One, Page Ninety-Five of the Starr County Map Records.
At this time, you opened the public hearing.
You, so you opened the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishes to discuss?
The public hearing, Mayor, is, is the alley, it is not open at the moment. If you all familiar with Country Store, they're on the corner of, um, Avasolo or Flores and Eisenhower. Uh, behind it, you have a large tract. It's a one-block. And in there, there is an alley that was never developed, it was never open. We have verified with city engineers and staff, there are no utilities. Um, and we are being requested by the developer of Country Store to abandon it so that he may use it to, uh, start his new, uh, store and gas station. We don't see any, 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 uh, thing as far as detrimental to the transportation or issues with the surrounding neighborhoods. You do have some maps, which are part of the, uh, form, and, uh...
Where, where is those map?
On item four, on tab four.
Four A.
Four A. This, yeah, this development was, uh, was kind of on hold, but since, uh, like Ms. Guillen reported on the new development by Border Star and Border Ace, it kind of spurs competition, so the owner's, uh, mortal poet doesn't wanna stay behind.
Okay. But this time, there's no one in reference to public hearing. This time, I'm gonna conclude the public hearing. Next, uh, business and orders, item four, Ordinances. Letter A, First Reading of Ordinance Number Twenty- Seventeen-Dash-Four, To Abandon the Alley Located Within Block Seven of the Corrected Doino North Grammar School Subdivision of Record at Volume One, Page Ninety-Five of Starr County Map Records.
You do have a memo from our engineer, uh, attesting the fact that there are no utilities within the alley. It is a fifteen-foot wide, uh, public dedication. It is not open, is not being used, and it will be consolidated into, uh, two tracts, two commercial tracts.
At this time, entertain a motion. If you look at the memo, there's the recommendation by staff.
We do have a, a separate handout with the engineer's recommendation.
entertain a motion?
Yeah, last one, move, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, business and orders, item five, Resolutions. Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number Twenty- Seventeen-Dash-Thirteen, Approving the Submission of a Grant Application to the Office of the Governor for the Border Star Grant Program Three-Zero-Six-Six-Zero-Zero-Two in the Amount of a Hundred Thousand for the Period of September First, Twenty-Seventeen, through August Thirty-First, Twenty-Eighteen. Five eight.
Good evening, Mayor.
Commissioner.
Uh, we're trying to get a resolution. We got awarded a hundred thousand for the Twenty-eighteen Border Star. Uh, we are currently working the Twenty- Seventeen Border Star. Um, as soon as we finish this, we could start with, uh, Twenty-eighteen. Uh, that provides, uh, overtime for officers to work border security.
It's a hundred thousand dollars, alright? Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
To approve, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, business and orders, item six, Planning. Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action on Varian's Request for Wine and Beer Retailers Off-Premise License by Melissa Andrade for Property Located at Three-O-Nine North Garza Street. Milan?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This, uh, item, uh, discussed in the, uh, public hearings was presented through the Planning and Zoning in the mode of a hearing and an actual meeting by the Planning and Zoning. Was presented to the Planning and Zoning on June the thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, and the Planning and Zoning did recommend denial of the item. Um, it is on, at Three-O-Nine North Garza Street. It is on at three oh nine North Garcia Street, it's across the city library. However, the proposed license meets city ordinances nineteen ninety-six dash five and six, two thousand and seven dash fifteen, two thousand nine dash two, and two thousand eleven dash one.
You see here in the memo that it does meet the city ordinances?
That's correct. The actual license, the allocation of it due to the library not considered a school would meet the requirements of the proposed, of the, I mean, I'm sorry, of the ordinance, two thousand eleven dash one.
So help me understand that, Mr. Milan, on the, so it meets the city ordinances, so why, there's a request for a variance?
Well, at the beginning, it was considered, all things considered, the library sometimes holds classes. That's why, after further investigation, went through our legal department also, came to find out that the library is not under T E A registration.
Did you say not?
Not, correct. So therefore, it's not considered a school. So to answer your question, if it does meet ordinance, yes, it does.
Okay, so I guess the question then is, again, do they need a variance?
No, sir.
Because again, it meets the city ordinances.
Correct.
All of the ordinances.
Correct. Again, planning and zoning recommended denial based on the input they received at both the hearing and the actual meeting. That's their recommendation.
What was the input?
Denial, the...
I don't know, but what?
But based on what?
Based on what?
Based on the previous comments that were presented at the public hearing, you know, the influence and of course, the proximity again to the library and the Scan Institute right across the, around the corner.
Did you get input from both Melissa and Scan, or was that, I mean, who?
That was just Scan, that was just one party percent. Now, having said that, this is not a gimme, you know, they still, if they get the license, they would have to comply with all city ordinances in addition to building permits, you know, code compliance, historic preservation certificates, and of course, you know, final inspections and it's a, these licenses are due for a year. So at the end of the year, if we find any violations or anything, should they get it, then we would probably not reissue the license.
My question, Mayor, is only is, you know, why would the planning and zoning deny this? If it's meeting all the criteria, you know, from the city? There's gotta be a purpose behind it, you know, something, something's wrong.
They took into consideration the input from the audience, that's all there is.
So based on the hearing?
Correct.
I assume they were under the assumption that T E A certified classes were being held at the library?
Correct, yes. However, it is our responsibility as a department to present facts and the library is not by T E A a school.
And if I hear correctly, the facts are, it meets city ordinances?
Correct.
It's not in violation of any of the ordinances. As per the application, it is not within, next to a church, three hundred feet of a church or public hospital. It is not within the three hundred feet of private or public schools?
Correct.
Or a thousand feet?
The metro is school, it's over a thousand feet from the proposed liquor licenses.
How far is the other store that they were, that we brought up? How far is it?
Well, that's, that's within, there's already existing, there's a bar and there's an existing events center within three hundred fifty feet.
But that, that location has been there before a library, before everything else came?
To be exact, from the sixties, I believe.
Well, is this the proper, is this the proper wording for this agenda item for?
It doesn't appear because, I mean, at this point, if I understand correctly, there's no need for a variance.
Correct.
Or is there a need for a variance? It does not seem like.
There's no need for a variance.
And what is the agenda?
Well, the agenda is asking for a variance.
It is presented as if that's, that's the way it was presented to the planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
The mayor is correct, you don't, you don't need a variance. We did discuss this with Mr. Mian prior to today, about a week ago, we've been going back and forth. He is correct, the library, our research indicated is not considered a school under T E A. And you're absolutely correct, the wording is wrong here. My suggestion is maybe take no action and we consider this properly.
Do you need a motion to table it, Mayor, or pass it?
No action.
What would be the correct wording on it?
It would just to approve?
Just to approve the permit?
Right. But send it back to P N Z.
Send it back to P N Z.
All right, so just for the purpose of this item, what would be, so it'd be no action at this time? All right, no action at this time. And item five B, discussion and possible action on request for beer retailer's off-premise license by Vavoso Investments for property located at six oh five West Main Street?
It's, Mayor, Commissioner, this item was approved, recommended approval by the planning and zoning commission at their meeting of June the thirteenth. It's actually, they have had a previous, there's been a previous license at that location. This is right next to the old Ford dealership here in Main Street.
On that application, sir, I noticed that there were some contradictory items there. Because if you look at the memo, says this location is a thousand nine feet away from Roque Guerra Elementary. But when you look at the application under measurement information saying yes, that's within three hundred feet of church and public hospital.
Well, that's a type on their behalf because we have personally measured that, that place to the, to Roque Guerra Elementary. It's way, it's over a thousand feet.
So then the application is incorrect, sir?
Yeah.
Because it's saying that it is, that yes, it is within three hundred feet.
That is a type on the A, B, C's behalf.
So the application?
Yes.
So the application is incorrect?
Correct.
All right, so then?
We took it back.
We actually walked with a measuring wheel on location, so our memorandum, the city's memorandum is accurate too.
So the memo is accurate, the application is not?
Yes.
So you need to come back with a correct application?
Yes.
So then it is, there wouldn't be any action at this time?
No action, set it back.
No action. Item six B. Next is six C, discussion and possible action on setback variance request by Juan Garcia for property located at one oh one South San Antonio Street.
Mayor, Commissioner, this property is right next to Yeribe Real's inspection station. It's a corner lot, south, southeast corner for a proposed law firm office space. However, his hearing for request for variance, setback variance request, it still has to be submitted for historic preservation compliance. However, to present it to historic preservation compliance, we still need to approve the setback requirements.
It is a corner lot, Mayor, and therefore requires substantial setbacks because it is a corner, but also because it is in a historic district. And most of our historic buildings are right up to the property and to keep with the same character that I think the P N Z have.
Correct. And actually, Mr. Garcia is proposing parking spaces. And again, he's fully aware of the historic preservation requirements. So all of that will be taken into consideration before issuing any building permit at all.
All right, and it was approved by planning and zoning?
Correct.
Entertaining a motion at this time?
I saw a move to approve, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jones. Have a second by Commissioner Garcia, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Next business and orders, item six D, discussion and possible action on setback variance request by Marco Cantú for property located at three eleven River Oak Avenue.
It's, Mayor, this site is on lot ten of the Plainview subdivision, phase four. Mr. Cantú is willing to build two apartments. Actually, his site plan has been engineered and he only needs four feet rear setback. City ordinance requires ten feet. It's also considering putting handicap, parking, it's got a retainage area, landscaping. And the planning and zoning has recommended approval on June the thirteenth.
And it was approved by planning and zoning?
Yes, sir.
So there are no issues there? All right, we have Commissioner, our motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries next. Six E, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for preliminary approval of the Country Store number two subdivision.
Mayor, this is, this subdivision is actually linked to the previous item you had on the abandonment of the alley. This for a proposed retail store, gas station, the corner of Eisenhower and seven fifty-five. Therefore, Mr. Rodriguez, in order to build, to accommodate his store, he has, tends to need to abandon that alley, eastman. And the subdivision has been reviewed and is recommended for approval by the planning and zoning commission.
And it's the same issue as the old?
Yes, sir.
Same alley?
Correct.
Mr. Milan, there's an eight-inch waterline and it runs alongside, would be seven fifty-five or Eisenhower. I do see a sixteen-inch. Will they be tapping into the sixteen-inch waterline?
Eight-inch waterline.
But the alley hold no utilities right now?
No, sir.
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Next is six F, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for preliminary and final approval of the Rio Delta subdivision.
Yes, Mayor, this subdivision for Rio Delta, it's on the seven fifty-five country states area. This subdivision, due to the things, the owners are city engineers, has been reviewed by a third party. And the planning and zoning has recommended approval on June the thirteenth. There is existing utilities, there's an actual street right of way. And the only suggestion by the planning and zoning is to dedicate an eastman on that actual street or paved improvements that they have.
No other issues with this? We have a motion approved by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Next, six G, discussion and possible action on request by Carlos Aguilar for preliminary approval of the José Luis García subdivision.
Yes, sir, this is again on the seven fifty-five country states area. This site is of what used to be the University of Texas Pan American location. However, Mr. García purchased the property from Dario Garcia. Now he wants to turn into four residential lots for his family use. So he had to bring to compliance with subdivision rules. The only comment was to basically comply and put septic tanks and eastmans and a lighting plan as requested by subdivision rules. Other than that, planning and zoning recommended approval.
It didn't require replating or anything?
There was no plat at all.
Oh.
Before, the university under the state of Texas, they didn't have to plat.
Okay, very good.
So they just took an area and are creating four lots or one lot?
No, it's four lots. It used to be just a piece of land.
Entertaining a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Next business and orders, item seven, city manager's report. Seven A, discussion and possible action regarding an agreement for the proposed dedication of a sixty-foot right of way for a future street along the north side of the new Medina Electric headquarters.
Mayor, Commissioners, along three one sixty-seven, you've seen where the new DPS building is. That is on Monarch Lane and right across, you have the new site for the Medina Electric. They just started construction. I think they're hoping to have a groundbreaking sometime in August. Monarch Lane serves the new school of idea and is the only road also that will be serving Medina Electric and the DPS. Due to the school opening their doors in August and the construction starting, there was a concern by neighboring and by the developer that it would become congested without construction traffic. They decided to then dedicate this road, they're going to develop it. And therefore, the construction traffic will be using that one to allow free traffic to flow into the idea school in the neighborhood, in that area. They have gone ahead and also provided an agreement that they will warrant any damage done by the construction traffic for a year after occupancy by Medina. Medina has requested that it be named Cooperative Way. We feel Medina Electric has become a very good partner with the city as we extend up north in their service area. We certainly would like to recommend, we're getting a new street already developed and it will serve a good purpose in that area.
And all they're asking for is to name it Cooperative Way?
Cooperative Way, sir, first name.
We know what they're gonna do with the old location? Other than reselling it?
They're gonna put it up for sale, yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Next is seven B, discussion and possible action to declare certain equipment as surplus. Yeah, finance department has a printer. They're no longer using that to...
An HP laser?
Yeah, HP laser. We have a motion.
So move, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to declare certain equipment as surplus by Commissioner Jones. Second by Commissioner Garcia, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Next is seven C, presentation by Christopher Julian of Adbertir?
That's Christopher Julian.
Christopher Julian, all right, sir.
That's all right, he's actually not here, okay? He had a medical procedure, so he could not be here, but he is watching live on your stream. Hey, Chris. Yes, we met with the city manager, or Chris did, regarding the Fahita Cookoff. We love the facility and we think it would be a great home for our event. The Fahita Cookoff has been around since nineteen seventy-six. It did take a ten-year hiatus in the mid-nineties, but we came back and we came back strong. We've, our previous homes have been Palm Fest for nearly nine years and recently Las Palmas. You do have a bit of information in your handout, I'd like to read that if that's... You do have a, a bit of information in your handout, I'd like to read that if, if that's okay, now, uh, and then we can go over some of the bullet points. Uh, there are hundreds, if not thousands of cookoffs around the country every year. Most are sanctioned by one barbecue association or another, but there is no cookoff like the Fajita Cookoff, started on July fourth nineteen seventy-six to celebrate America's two-hundredth birthday. The Fajita Cookoff was also celebrated, celebrating the birthplace of the Fajita, deep south Texas. History reports it all started in the early nineteen hundreds when cattle drives from south Texas to Fort Worth along the Chisholm Trail served steers, were slaughtered along the way, uh, to feed seventy-plus trail hens. The trail boss would get the prime cuts of beef, uh, and the hens, mostly Mexican cowboys, vaqueros, would, would get the uh, the leftovers basically, uh, they get the products cabeza, tripas, moyehas, fajitas, uh, that's Spanish for faja, or skirt, I'm sure everybody's aware of that, um. Back then barbecue grills had not been invented yet, so the vaqueros would just throw the meat on the grill, and uh, once the meat was cooked, they would peel off the coals, peel off the membranes, and it was the sweetest meat you ever had.
I can't really make fajitas anymore.
Cause it's easier to put them on a pit. Uh, in nineteen seventy-six, when the Fajita Cookoff was started, fajitas were selling for fifty-nine cents a pound. Now they're what, three, four, three, four dollars a pound? Mostly ground up for hamburgers, over the years, the popularity of the Fajita grew, and so did the Fajita Cookoff. Soon, the Fajita Cookoff became the largest outdoor festival the Rio Grande Valley had ever seen. Today, the Fajita Cookoff is a major attraction in the valley, thousands of people come out to see crazy cooking teams compete in five cooking categories, um, in October. Unlike all other cookoffs, all the cooking categories of the Fajita Cookoff are truly indigenous of deep south Texas. Pan de campo, cowboy bread, frijoles alachara, moyehas, traditional fajitas, and gourmet fajitas. Yes, we do gourmet fajitas. And you should see some of the presentations, these presentations, they, they go all out. I wish I would have brought some visuals for you, but uh, if you go to our, our, yeah, samples, probably would have been a good, been a good idea for dinnertime, uh, maybe next time. And yes, we do have a showmanship award, okay? Basically what that is, um, is the cooking camps will set up their, their, their camp, and the more showy they are, uh, the more points they get, and awesome trophies. Uh, and also, part of the showmanship is also in the, in the gourmet category, where they dress them up and, and uh, make the presentation really, really fancy. And again, you can see some of these visuals on uh, our webpage, thefajitacookoff.com, or even our Facebook page. Uh, the Fajita Cookoff will also have live entertainment throughout the day, kiddie carnival with dozens of mechanical rides, inflatables, bouncers, and slides, and then after the cooking competition, there will be a big concert for everybody to enjoy. If you'd like to experience the colorful and vibrant history of deep south Texas and taste some of the best food in the world, come to the Fajita Cookoff. Now, go over some of these, just some basic bullet, bullet points, you know, part of this is to gain national publicity, um, Food Network, Food Network Magazine, and Texas Monthly, we, we actually have been communicating with each one of these publications to try and, and get national recognition, uh, and they are talking to us. What a better place to have this event than the hometown of the vaquero, that started it all in the early nineteen hundreds. Not just a cookoff, it's a family event, family games and activities, kiddie carnivals, arts and craft vendors, uh, live entertainment, lots of food and beverages. The way we support this is by tapping into our local civic organizations, um, charity organizations to run the concessions and games and activities, and we do give back to those charity organizations, uh, to compensate them for their, for their time donation. It's a free event, but we need help to accomplish this with overhead. One last thing. Does anybody know, has anybody had a, a chicken fajita? Yes, I'm assuming, how about a shrimp fajita? Can you tell me where the fajitas are on a chicken? Or how about a shrimp? There's no such thing. So, with that in mind, would you like to hand these out to me? Coalition against false fajitas. Part of, part of this cookoff qualifications is you have to use fajitas, you can't use cerulean, you can't use real life, and there's no such thing with chicken fajita, come on folks. That's all I got, and I hope you consider, got any questions?
Sir, if I may add, we also discussed, uh, Mr. Julian's willing to invest, you know, he's got an advertising company.
Yes.
Twelve thousand dollars approximately.
Fifteen.
Fifteen in advertising, okay? We also talked about, uh, his assistance in raising the funds to maybe put seven thousand dollars towards a band, possibly more.
Yes, absolutely.
For a local band also. Uh, and any events, for example, involving the kids, if the Boys and Girls Club helped, uh, and participating in that process, that they would be turning back around and giving them a donation for helping out.
Yes, uh, in the past, we worked with Teach the Children, uh, and we have donated thousands of dollars to that organization over the years.
Can we talk about when you're proposing?
Actually, uh, we usually have this event in, um, mid to late October.
So that, the key here, Mayor, is that they're looking for a landing place where the Fajita Cookoff will be home to, okay, so that could be Rio Grande. That means he's having Fajita Cookoffs all over the valley, it would be in Rio Grande.
Right, this is a heritage event, like I said, it, it's, it's been around for, since nineteen seventy-six. So, uh, the event is branded, um, people recognize the name, and, um, you know, it makes the advertising just so much easier. We have cooking teams that, uh, that reach out to us every year, before we even, you know, announce what we're gonna do, say, when's it gonna be, when can I sign up, I wanna get my, my spot. So, we, we've already have an established, uh, um, clientele for this event, following, so we, we do feel like, regardless of where we bring this, we really like it to be here, that we can draw a crowd.
And you would open it up to everyone, or is it a sanctioned event?
It's not a sanctioned event, we do this for fun. We do this for fun, anybody can, can join.
As long as they don't bring chicken fucking to you.
Right. Or shrimp.
I would, I would suggest that, uh, that, that you get a hold of Mrs. Dalinda Guillen.
Fantastic.
Uh, she's with, uh, she's our director for the E D C.
Great.
And, uh, so we can help you with the process and accommodate, see how we can accommodate you and help you out.
Will do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And by the way, you know, I hadn't thought about those fajitas in a long time, but I remember those fajitas that you had to peel off the skin before you ate them. What happened to those fajitas?
Uh, I think H E B or, or the meat markets are cutting off the, the membrane, serving them like that. I don't know what else. Thank you, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Next, uh, business and orders, item eight, eight contracts and agreements.
Appreciate it.
Discussion and possible action to approve a memorandum of agreement with R D C C I S D for the use of facilities for the Boys and Girls Youth Club program and the summer swimming program.
Mayor, in preparation and anticipation for another successful year, you know, we have, uh, registered a hundred and sixty kids, on average, in attendance, there's about a hundred, a hundred and ten. I, I do want to congratulate the staff, uh, it seems that it, they're just kids, but if you've ever spent eight hours in a room full of kids, it takes a lot of guts. But they, they enjoy it, um, I know they had a slime day and they had a water day, and they're preparing their trip to Imes, so they, they're really excited, um, they have the full support, also the board patrol that goes and spends time for the kids. They are, they wanna get ahead of the game, make sure that they're on the proper school board agenda to continue using the facilities, uh, this memorandum is the same as we used last year, we're hoping that the swimming pool will be available, that they do the repairs needed, and that, uh, we can continue and, and start our swimming program with the Dustin Golding.
Mayor, I move that we approve the memorandum.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. This time is item nine, executive session, chapter five five one, Texas Government Code section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, Texas Government Code section five one, five five one zero seven two, deliberations regarding real property in items A, B, C, D, and E. It is seven twenty-two P M. Right, at this time, we're back from executive session, it is approximately eight twenty-five P M. Start with item ten, reconvene into regular session, ten A, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash fourteen, approving the bits received on the tax resale properties and authorizing the mayor to execute resale deeds.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, just for the record, Mike O'Connell with Limebarger, uh, as you know, we're your tax attorneys, and as we discussed in executive session, this is for the approval of the sale of nine properties which were previously struck off to the city. I'll be happy to answer any questions, y'all may have it this time.
Thank you, sir. To Mayor, I, uh, make the motion to approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash fourteen.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash fourteen by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, uh, thank you, sir. Next business and orders, item ten B, discussion and possible action regarding cause number D C seventeen one thirty-four, and at this time, there was no action on this item. Next, the business and orders, item ten C, discussion and possible action regarding Texas S B four and/or S B one zero zero four.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion, uh, to authorize our city attorney to draft a resolution addressing S B four to be presented at the next, uh, city commissioner meeting.
Okay.
A second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Garcia, we have a second by Commissioner Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Thank you all for being here tonight, certainly appreciate you all being here. Ten, uh, next item is ten D, discussion and possible action regarding update on general counsel legal services, and there is no action on that item. Alright, we have entertain a motion.
I remove it with the team.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Meeting adjourned.